Okay, and. Happy birthday. Welcome to the August ninth, twenty twenty-two Board of Selectment meetings. I would like to call the meeting to order and all of us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, liberty and justice for all.
So we've got a, there's quite a crew out there in the, in the hallway. Quickly. I would, I would, um, as far as consenting to the minutes of our regular meeting of July twelfth, I would accept the motion.
So move to approve as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? Community relations announcements in open forum.
That shall be me. Charlton Police Department is enforcing pedestrian enforcement in air driving enforcements for the month of August with NHGSA federal funds through EOPSS programs. The Board of Selectment are looking for volunteers to serve on a variety of committees. All that information is on the, on the town website at www.townofcharlton.net. From Town Clerk, state primary and W. Charlton Regional School District Special Election will be held on Tuesday, September sixth at Heritage School from seven to eight P. M. Early voting for both ballots will be held in the Board of Selectments Room, Meeting Room Number One at the Town Hall, starting on Saturday, August twenty-seventh through Friday, September second. All that information times is also on the town's website. The last day to register for vote for those who, for these two elections will be in the Town Clerk's office from nine to five P. M. on Saturday, August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Any questions, please contact the Town Clerk's office at five oh eight, two four eight, two two four nine. Some info from the library on ongoing events, Designing America, the Olmstead Effect. Author will talk, author will, auto talk with a local author, Gail Olmstead. He's a, he's a very well-known designer. His projects include New York City Central Park, Baltimore Estate, Worcester Allen Park, and Boston Emerald, Leckless, just to name the few. Carlos Odra Trio Summer Concert is happening on Thursday, August twenty-fifth. That's from six thirty to seven thirty in Dexter Hall in the library. Teen and teen creative writing group will meet on Wednesday, August seventeen, three thirty to four fifteen, in a community meeting room as well. And last but not least, the new Boy Scouts of America troop is forming, which is pretty exciting, and they're looking for funding girl members to parlor the existing active troop of thirty years, Troop Three Three Eight. The girls in grades five to ten are invited to an informational meeting that will take place in San Joseph Church on August eleventh at six thirty P. M. That will be it for now.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Just a very quick thing for those at home and for the audience. So we're not meeting again as a board till September thirteenth. And again, as a reminder, the primaries on the sixth, as well as the W. Charlton School vote. So make sure that you keep those aware in your minds. And if you have questions about what's actually being asked and why, make sure that you reach out to our school committee members. Thanks, Stephen.
Yes. And, and I'd like to add to the, to the, we're going to follow through on this later on down the agenda, but the, but the Worcester Red Sox have designated September twenty-first as Charlton Takeover Day of the Wood Sox. So for, it, it's a fifteen-dollar ticket for every ticket you buy, five dollars would go to Charlton Rias. They selected that. Rias is, is our, a lot of people in town know what that is. It's, it's, it's fuel assistance for the elderly, which they thought it was a good year to pick that one, so they selected that. So September twenty-first, more will be coming out about that.
I think you have to go to the link to buy the tickets?
Yes, the Wood Sox are currently developing a link that'll be shared out, and I know that at Old Home Day, they'll have a booth set up where people can buy it right there at Old Home Day.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they will have a iPad or a scanner or something.
Share the competition about the, the next closest town.
Yeah, and this is because, you know, because we're all a little competitive. Auburn's got, Auburn's leading the pack right now with five fifty-three, so I won't settle for anything less than five fifty-four.
So we just ask everybody to promote it, help us out?
Yes, but not for that, for, for community, yeah. And then I guess, um, we're moving on to.
Sorry, just a open forum in case somebody wants to say anything.
Oh.
Hello.
Hey, how you doing?
Hello.
Good, how are you? Susan Smolsky. I was wondering if the board had received the plan for the Center Depot Stafford Street intersection from Mr. Golis as of yet to review.
The study and we were looking for those improvements to figure out how we're going to do the four-way stop sign?
Still waiting for that for C. M. RPC.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as stories show, it's state, it's a state quasi, like, a, a, agency, so they work very similar.
All right.
They're kind of dragging their feet.
Thank you.
As soon as we get it, you guys will have it.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else for open forum, or? I guess, I guess none. Okay, then, then we should move on to appointments. Andrew?
All right, so the first appointment's for Sergeant and Special Police Officer. So with the retirement of Sergeant Gary Wood effective July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, there is an opening on the Charlton Police Department for a Sergeant. Police Chief Dowd has stated that we have an active civil service list and would recommend Brian Codren, who is ranked number one on the civil service list, to be appointed to Sergeant effective August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. So I'm going to take care of that one first.
Good evening. Brian came to us from Selfridge, spent four years at Selfridge PD. Came here, he's been here for eight years. He's been the SRO, and he's done a good job as a patrolman. He's also our first SRO that we've had at Bay Path, he did a great job there. And he's currently has attained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Father two, I, I'll, I'll, if you could tell you all his achievements.
Hobbies, right.
That's fine.
Although I've heard nothing about your, nothing but great things about your time up at Bay Path, so know that that, that has had a almost everlasting effect on the students, so very well done on that.
Thank you.
And just pursuing the further studies, that's always great, appreciated.
Thanks.
Which is a key.
I will happily make that motion to formally make the appointment.
I second the motion.
Do I hear, do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian, like, do we do a pin thing with you now? I mean, how's this work? Come on up, everybody, come on up. Oh, guys, come on up and take pictures, seriously. Like, you'll be much better off up, up, up here. Don't be shy.
So the people can see you, yes.
Just stab him.
No.
Thank you.
Well done, Brian. Be safe out there, Sarge.
Thank you, sir.
And also, you guys don't have to hang around, we're, we're not that exciting.
All right, the second part of that is that Chief Dowd has also asked the board to appoint Gary Wood as Special Police Officer, so that if the need arises, he can be called in.
I think keeping Gary around would be fantastic, so I'll make that motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I hear none.
So, Mr. Chairman, with the board's pleasure, just for expediency, we, we can hold any of these we want, but I'd probably make a motion that we can, we, we have a lot of appointments tonight, that we can do numbers two through eight in, in Toto, so that we only need one motion. And it, and unless the board objects, I will happily make that motion. So basically, all the rest of appointments would be, would be one motion, because they were only certain people.
Outside, outside of the resignations, but yes, 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 I, I would accept the second one.
I second the motion. Do we have to read all their names to, for the appointment?
I think that would be nice.
If you'd like to.
What I'd be for, yeah.
We just don't, we don't have a scanner, this is. Put Andrew on the spot.
Got to tap him on the spot.
Call the auditor on the front desk.
So, for Department Assistant for the Town Clerk, Jean Vincent.
Well done, Jean.
Appointment of Police Department Custodian, Ernesto Rosa. For Constable, Michael T. Banach, Banachevitz. Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate, Garrett LaFrance. And, let's see, the slate of election workers and police officers for the election, which are attached, I won't go through every name. Community Center Feasibility Committee, Mike Zarowski. And Sabrina Webb for the Banshell Development Committee. And that's it.
Cool. Mr. Jefferson, I think Jean just gave me a look that she'd like to say something quickly. Come on up, Jean.
It'll probably be a separate motion, but in regards to the town clerk.
That position needs to be made, a special municipal employee. And just to remind you, it's not the employee, it's the position. Okay. But that will make life's matters.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Make it a little bit easier for everything.
So I'll keep the first motion as is, to, to, to make all these appointments to do.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I hear none.
The second would be to make the position a special, a special employee, or whatever we're calling it.
And I second that.
So go ahead, Jean.
Okay, we'll do. I would also ask if we could make that effective August first.
Oh, sure, yeah, effective August first, make Jean a, a special employee, because again, for those at home, the reason being, it's because she's also on the planning board, so.
And election worker.
Oh, election worker, yeah, forgive me, I should, yeah. So this is a procedural thing that we do to make sure that everyone is on the up and up.
And not so much for the position, but for the, uh, pay to be retro to August first. Caught you on that one.
I'm going to hold that one for now, just because we didn't really think, we didn't know about that one.
Okay. We'll discuss it later.
Yeah, September.
But we're going to have to, we're going to have to discuss it pretty soon if it's.
Yeah.
Well, it would be effective today, and then, then in our meeting in September, we would, we would discuss around the thing in September. So, so my motion around, around the position, well, Jean, being, being a special employee.
Yes.
Stands.
And I, we, I second that, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend then, under new business for the September meeting, that we include a discussion. Jean, you've talked to Andrew and figure out, like, what's going on. Cool? You got that?
That will be after the primary, but yes, yeah, that's fine.
It's just a technicality, probably.
Yep. So moving on, we are.
Resignation number nine, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
All right, so we had a resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals Administrative Assistant. Been notified by Human Resources that Susan Gelb, Zoning Board of Appeals Administrative Assistant, has submitted her resignation effective July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Board should accept her resignation, and a letter thanking her for her service to the town is in your signed folder. And just to update the board, we're currently working with the ZBA and other boards to develop a staffing plan for this position. This position was only a five-hour a week budgeted position, but we're looking to possibly consolidate with Recreation to, to address some of their staffing needs moving forward.
Motion with regret.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other resignation was for a per diem dispatcher, attaches an email from Cesar Alvarado, resigning as a per diem dispatcher to pursue another opportunity.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we're at, um, we are at, we're a little bit past the six forty-five, but we're ready for the LNG guys. If they want to have a go at it.
Hey, guys, how you doing?
Good, thank you. Thank you for having us.
If you want to do the usual introductions for those who haven't followed, but.
Sure, my name is Boris Prevnov. I'm a managing member of Liberty Energy Trust, which is a manager for NAC, Northeast Energy Center, and with me today is Jay Gumbel. Jay Gumbel, and, um, project owner engineer. And if you have any engineering questions, please direct them to Jay. We do appreciate the opportunity to update you. As you know, the project received all the state approvals in November last year, and the project is proceeding well. State also encourages us to update community, to update the town, and that's what we intended to do. Obviously, we are not doing it only during the Board of Selectment meeting. We have a full-time onsite representative, and Rich Alenik would be glad to address any questions. He has thirty-two years of experience with LNG project, working as a plant manager, so he's onsite. The project is progressing on time, and as the project is taking shape, these consultations with the town, we decided that it's a good time to show how the project is planning to look like. So on my left from your right is a per se, I view on the project. The picture didn't really change from a previous, it's just taking shape, and as people drive by on Route one sixty-nine, they can see the shape of the tank. So this is a tank on the left, LNG tank. As I mentioned, the project is progressing on schedule, so I will give a quick update on the dates, and you have more detailed information in the presentation in front of you. So from community impact point of view, key probably to mention that it's not only on time, but it's also proceeding forward safely. So there are not a single safety violation for the project, and we're working hard, full time, to keep it. There are few safety managers onsite, also full-time, so they control related to all safety issues for the project. Key activities that could have impact on town probably behind us. So one of them is Plastin, that's always nice to have behind us, and same this activity went without concerns, issues. Another activity that probably will catch people's attention, probably the only one, will be interconnection pipeline. So most of activities will be as filed down through HDD, so underground drilling, so it should not impact driveways and any other aspects. It will go along Route one sixty-nine, approximately one mile distance for the interconnection pipeline. So this one would be visible, would be probably happening second part of August, September, and, um, probably just as a heads up, this one is mostly regulated by Massachusetts Department of Transportation, so it's in the Mass DOT right of way. So it's also permit coming from Mass DOT, so that's a regulatory body for this procedure, for this activity, for placement of this interconnection pipeline. From other activities, so on this project, it's probably a little bit maybe hard to see, and we provided it to the town, there will be a sound wall. On the picture in front of you, you probably can see it a little bit more close. The sound wall will be in front of the project, so when the driver passes by, they would be able to see the sound wall. It will take a shape of natural stone, sunstone, so it would be probably not really visible because of landscaping plan, which is also submitted to the town. And that's probably key items, and we appreciate opportunity to share with you, because it will be also filed with the state. The landscaping plan, the rendering of the project, and we obviously wanted to be sure that you have a chance to see, comment, ask any questions prior to this, a little. And that's update on this, we continue to work on a safety plan, so it will be submitted, and we continue to be in touch with the fire chief. It will be submitted to the building inspector and the fire chief, probably in a couple of weeks, not longer. We also continue discussion with the fire chief related to training. So under the host community agreement with the town, the project will provide training. Training will be provided in two academies. So for commanding staff, it will be provided in Houston, it's just a bigger national academy, but Massachusetts, actually the state where LNG was adopted first, so Massachusetts has its own academy, so the rest of the staff will be going through the Massachusetts Academy in training. And these activities will be also coordinated with Southbridge, the town of Southbridge. So all of these activities are also on time. The project does comply with all the safety requirements, federal and state inspections up to date, and there haven't been any citations related to the project.
And, Mr. Jefferson? Just a quick thing for those at home, Boris and James gave us a bunch of slides. If you look out on our Board of Selectmen page, under Agenda packets, they're all out there under the August ninth meeting. So really, I think the biggest date probably a lot of people are going to be interested in is this May eleventh, twenty-three, because that's when your completion is, or at least your mechanical completion, right? That would be, I'd assume, the, the last step before formal, like, final permits, and actually, I don't want to say turning it on, because that's too flip, but for all intents and purposes, turning, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
So at least till May of twenty-three.
Thank you.
My, my questions will more be around, um, local, local costs. So, so when we send our command staff to Texas, that's on you?
Correct.
You guys are paying that, and then when we send the rest of our firefighters to, that's on you as well?
Correct.
Okay. Was the, um, was the tank manufactured on site, or was it delivered?
It was delivered and assembled on site. So what you will see right now is a shell, which came out from thirty-two panels. So these panels were prefabricated, delivered on site, and then assembled on site.
Do you have any other facilities like this in Massachusetts, or this is the only one?
This is not us, but there are no shortage of similar facilities in bigger, in Springfield, in Boston, in Providence.
But not by you, not by your company?
Not by us, sorry, but.
By, by the same providers, I would say, so the same companies that building this project.
For example, there was a question regarding the tank, so the same company, Cashman Preload, they just completed two of such tanks in Pennsylvania.
Is that where you headquartered? Where, where do you headquartered?
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania?
And the latest probably tank was completed in Alaska. So the company have been in the business for more than fifty years, I guess, because the oldest tank is actually in Philadelphia. I think it's more than fifty years old, built by Cashman Preload.
So when it is all completed, all operational, probably sometime by the summer of next year?
Correct.
And just woman here? So those trucks are going to come into the facility, they're going to load them with gas, however you do it, is that what it is? And they're going to take off, go by one sixty-nine, and then off to the Mass Bike?
Correct.
Is that?
Correct. And it's not too many trucks, just to be sure, so we are talking about twelve, fourteen trucks a day within twenty-four hours, so it's not a massive amount of trucks.
And what, what hours of operation?
So the hours of operation, I mean, in general, it would be probably from seven o'clock until, um, so they will be going from Boston to this facility, onto Springfield. So it will be most likely from seven to five P. M.
Post-concern the traffic and all.
So, so not overnight, but.
Correct.
So during the day?
Correct.
And who is your biggest vendor? National grid, who?
National grid will, is a customer.
Is a customer.
Mr. Chairman, I think we had a question on Zoom, or for the V. the Q. and A.
Oh.
It was just a question related to, um, the removal of any soil from the site. Let's see. Where, where was it being brought to, and was there any contamination issues with any of that soil?
No, it's not hazardous waste, it's all topsoil effectively, and the contractor provides the service, taking it outside, so Jay, do you know?
I don't know the exact location, but it's going.
Yeah, we can follow up and provide location, but the provider is responsible for picking it from site and taking it out appropriate location.
And just answer a little bit more, we did, we did testing of all, of all the soil before the project even started. It all, it's all clean, it's all clean soil. A lot of it were used.
Construction was down there checking things out, too, so.
That's correct, that's correct, yep.
It's a little bit of a loaded question, but it's curious on my mind. What?
Go ahead.
No, yeah, well, thank you. It, it's, do you consider the tank building property, tax-wise, or excise, or personal property? How do you consider the tank?
Well, I'm probably not an expert to answer this question. I think there is a case enough precedence in Massachusetts, so, and as you know, it's always a little bit a question, what it is. From my understanding of this, it's a personal property, because it's part of integrated manufacturing process, but I would defer to experts, because there are enough experts and, um, kind of trying to define and, um, opine on these issues. So we use, we feel reputable firm, Grant Thornton, that is assisting us in this project. I think there is enough experience in Massachusetts related to such tanks and nationwide, so I would just defer it to experts, and we will follow the expert advice.
And that, that's a fair answer. I, I think if, if it, um, my experience, if it has wheels on it, it's personal property. If it's a million-gallon tank, it's a permanent structure, and it should be taxed as that. I'm not, and I haven't talked to the assessors about this, but that's just my personal opinion,
but. And there was a case in Massachusetts that has a silo. Personal property or real property, and the answer of the state court was that it is a personal property, as part of the process. But that's why my take two, it's an expert questions that deserve an expert answer.
Because, yeah, and for the people at home, we all, when you buy a new car and you're building a million-gallon tank, so it gets taxed at a hundred thousand dollars for the first year, and then it's forty thousand dollars the second year, we all know how excise tax works, that's personal property. I don't, I, I'm struggling to understand how, how that's not building property and taxable. That's, I'm, someone can, yeah, an expert can convince me either way on that, but that's just my opinion.
Perhaps, Mr. Chairman, maybe we bring in one of the members of the, of the assessor's team to kind of have a, have a deeper conversation.
Has anything to do with exclusions and everything?
Yeah, but this is moving pretty fast, and we have this gentleman right in front of us. I wasn't going to make tonight easy on him.
We shared this case study with an assessor, but our, probably my non-expert answer would be that we do plan to find an agreement with the town related to property tax, so that the town does feel that we pay our fair share in the process, and obviously, process is also related to manufacturing, so personal property could be exempt.
That's the other part of it.
But our plan would be to work with the town in a constructive and pragmatic way, so that the town feels that we, as I mentioned, pay our fair share, and that we don't have to go on this item, so most of the items we do go to the state, but on this item, we can pay not to the state, but to the town, the tax, and that would be our preference.
My last one, and do you have any plans for the community involvement, anything to promote your business throughout the community, anything, you know, to support the community?
We do, and I think obviously, there are probably few aspects. A, we do want to be part of the community, and we do want to support all the community activities in this. And second, we do want also to find a way how to leverage. And second, we do want also to find a way how to leverage our expertise and energy. So we do all kinds of energy, including carbon capture, including hydrogen and all other projects. So we will be glad to find a way how to leverage both. Our presence and involvement with the town. And second, our knowledge and exposure to the energy sector. This topic and environment, because both topics are highly important. And both topics do require expertise and resources.
Thank you.
And Ms. Jefferson, I imagine Boris and Jay, if, if the, because you included your email and, and contact information. So anyone from the, the public who has, you know, specific questions, you know, reach out to Jay and Boris and, you know, hopefully we, uh?
Please do. And we maintain also website, uh, and we try to keep it up to date on all the major activities. And it's also has a function to submit any questions and comments. And same, if there are any questions, comments, concerns, uh, don't hesitate. As I mentioned, we have a full-time person on site. There are plenty of other people on site, but who is focused on this activity. And if there are any questions come in, the town administrator or Mr. Golis, they do direct these questions appropriately to any level of expertise. Uh, so far, I get also all the questions. We are not related. But it is still helpful to address them soon as I'm late.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, yeah. Keep us updated when like weird things happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep us updated on that.
Oh, we got some more good news coming up next. That's nice.
And now we are five minutes late. Sorry our beloved Old Home Day Committee for making you wait five minutes. That was kind of an important conversation, but you guys are front and center. Giddy up. I just want to add right now, before you guys even say anything that might change my mind. You are an absolute beautiful looking group. You really are. And you work hard. And you, you probably meet, you probably meet since January, you meet more than we do on it. So thank you for your contribution to the town and, and all that other stuff. On to you.
You know, the, the thing about the Old Home Day Committee is that I don't think anybody will disagree. We have a lot of fun.
You do.
And that's why it's always a great event. And the best part of the event is what we're about to announce tonight, which honors people in the town that are kind of unsung heroes. And so I'm really delighted to tell you about them. And they'll be given certificates and awards on Old Home Day at two o'clock, two thirty. So each year, the Charlton Old Home Day Committee seeks nominations for community service awards for the Charlton Business or Residence. The awards are intended to recognize volunteer work in the community, schools, and service to fellow citizens. The awards are not intended for those who during their traditional occupation complete their tasks, but for those who perform the good deeds purely out of volunteerism and civic duty. And, uh, so that unfortunately eliminates many employees, which is unfortunate. Uh, whatever the endeavor, these people deserve to be recognized and applauded for their efforts. So the Youth Service, Community Service Award was established in two thousand and eleven and is given, intended to recognize the positive contributions of a young member of the community who has altruistically pursued humane efforts in improving the world in which we live. Such an award to establish an example for others, um, of a young age to follow. So the first award, we have two of them in this, in this section. We have Nina Zorowski, who has helped out with Old Home Day last year in the children's section and volunteered for the Board of Selectment meetings at Shepherd Hill. She has participated as a member of the National Honor Society, has volunteered with the local charity organizations, including fundraising. She also ran the local radio show with Drew Anderson, helping teenagers. She's been a member and founder of the Debate Club, writing and editing for the local newspaper at the school, student council, varsity volleyball, and volunteered to teach the youth volleyball. She participated in two internships at the Worcester District Attorney's Office in Auburn Historical Museum. Nina Zorowski is an outstanding and hardworking teenager and a fine example of youth in this community. Maggie Malali, Malali. Maggie has volunteered over the past six years or so and contributed time and service. Besides the many P T O events, she regularly is involved with student council and, um, the National Honor Society, as well as a frequent volunteer at Chipping, Blessings Farm, and St. Joseph's Vacation Bible School. She is a Project Three Fifty-One alumni and has done service projects for Cradles to Crayons, local food drives, and nine-one-one tribute service where they put together hygiene projects, prod, product drive to sell, to send to the military, and also made a tribute garden for victims of nine eleven. She plays multiple sports and is always going the extra mile for others. Maggie's character and desire to serve and succeed make her an excellent candidate for this award. The Individual Community Service Awards. These awards are given to those who have made contributions which have brightened our little corner of the world. Marguerite Amarge Jalbert has lived in Charlton since she was five years old. She attended Charlton Schools and graduated from Charlton High School in nineteen sixty-six, animal shelter in nineteen, two, twenty nineteen, and immediately started up the Nutritional Assistance Program for Pets, N A P P, to help families in need. NAP helps families keep their companions instead of rehoming them when times get tough, ensures the pets are getting adequate nutrition. Carrie also is the clerk for Focus and a regular helper at Pets, Pet Photos for Santas at Cornerstone Bank. Uh, since two thousand and twenty-one, both Carrie and Eric have been, um, helping on regular distribution days at Chipping to stock the shelves, carry out boxes to aid recipients. They both have been delivering food to people that are homebound. Eric joined the Board of Charlton Animal Shelter as the clerk in two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and eighteen, he took on the role of treasurer, which he still holds. Eric is a regular helper at his favorite event, Pet Photos with Santa at Cornerstone Bank. Um, there's so much more to say about all these people. You can see I've crossed. Jerry told me I was, there was too much. His fault. He did.
Well, that's why Jerry was on FinCom, so.
That's right. Um, Debbie Cheslick has worked as a volunteer in the town of Charlton for many years. Is a member of the Charlton Helping Hands Society, the Charlton Lions Club, the Salt Committee Council, seniors and law enforcement together, the Charlton Rees Foundation Residential and Energy Assistant for Seniors, and the Friendly Friends of Charlton seniors. She is also a Charlton Surt member, um, Community Emergency Response Team, and volunteers for Chipping at the food pantry, and, um, has many years of volunteer services to the, this community and more than merits this award. Mike Zareski. Mike has been an outstanding volunteer here at the Senior Center for eleven years. He's an active member of Charlton American Legion, Golden Age Club, member of the Friendly Friends. He recently became a member of both the Charlton Council on Aging Board and Dementia Friendly Charlton Committee. Mike has given his time as DJ for various events, and he has set up several tournaments for the Senior Center, including cribbage pool and cornhole. He spends many hours at the Senior Center helping with activities and special events. Mike's enthusiastic attitude gets people up and going. He's an asset to the community of Charlton. And the Business Award. This award is intended to recognize local businesses who on a regular basis support community events, groups, and activities. And I've done a lot of crossouts here, so, because they have done so much. But it would take too much time. So the Business Award this year is going to the Overlook. The Overlook has a longstanding history and commitment to serving as ambassador and advocate for the town of Charlton through good deeds, volunteerism, and civic duty. The Overlook has been instrumental in supporting the town in a variety of philanthropic ways. In nineteen ninety and ninety-three, the Overlook gifted land to the town for municipal use, including the construction of what is now the police station. Each, where do I, two?
You want three?
I've got, I've got three. Thank you. Over the years, the Overlook has collaborated with the town's Overlook Annual Fall Festival, Summer Concert Series, and Pop-Up Farmer's Market. The Overlook has opened its campus to the town as an official voter polling station, hosted and catered both public and private banquets and events for town citizens, and welcomed Charlton residents to its giant hillside showcasing the best views of Charlton's annual Old Home Day fireworks. That was last year. This year, they'll be at Bay Path, in case anybody's curious about that. In two thousand and twenty-one, the Overlook opened up its trail network to the public, consisting of six point five miles of easy to intermediate terrain. The walking trails are located throughout the Overlook's four hundred-plus acres of wooded area. They have enjoyed a mutually beneficial partnership with Bay Path Regional Vocational School, providing Bay Path students with meaningful internships at the Overlook in carpentry, plumbing, and HVAC. The Overlook has also served as an onsite training location for Bay Path certified nursing assistance clinical work for many years. Further deepening its connection to the town of Charlton in nine, in two thousand and sixteen, the Overlook gifted a large supply of land and grave markets to the West Ridge Cemetery in the town. The Overlook continues to show its appreciation and support for local heroes and servant leaders, delivering delicious holiday meals to the Charlton Police, Fire, Emergency Response Workers several times each year. Prior to COVID nineteen, the Charlton Fire Department utilized the swimming pool free of charge to fulfill their training requirements. Hundreds of Charlton residents and the citizens and surrounding communities were able to take advantage of the Overlook's state-of-the-art fitness center to meet their health and wellness needs. And I think that's starting up again. In two thousand and nineteen, the Overlook sold nineteen acres of prime real estate to the town for the construction of a new public safety complex for the police, fire, and emergency responders. The Overlook has never wavered in its fierce support of the public safety complex and will continue to do everything possible to bring the new facility to fruition for the benefit of the entire region. The Overlook is in the process of launching its master plan and vision for the future and will focus on mixed-use projects and intergenerational living that includes, but is not limited to seniors. And will enable the organization to reach even further beyond its own walls to attract more people and businesses to its campus in the town of Charlton. Evolving alongside and in partnership with the town of Charlton, the Overlook plans to reposition and revitalize its existing campus, creating a pedestrian-friendly village with an increased commerce stream, a village center with a, with a frequent and, and event center, a boutique hotel, affordable housing, shopping, and targeted retail, locally sourced farm-to-table restaurants, a brewery. Wow, we won't have to go anywhere. Expanded green spaces with a focus on entertainment and outdoor recreation and more. Uh, so the next few awards are the most important. The, they're all important, but the Honorary Parade Marshal. This award goes to a longtime resident who during their lifetime has consistently improved our quality of life. Brian Walcott has put in over forty years of dedicated service to the Boy Scouts of America. He was awarded a Two Score Award from Boy Scout Troop Three Three Eight recently for his years of dedication to the scouting movement. The Two Score Award was an award the troop made up in-house, and it recognizes Brian's forty years in scouting, where he continues to be a dedicated and valuable mentor to our community. Brian is an assistant scoutmaster and advancement coordinator within our troop currently. He is a standard fixture at any campfire, where he continually teaches youth how to cook, and specifically to use a Dutch oven to prepare a meal. He has mentored many of these same scouts to reach the prestigious Eagle, rank of Eagle, the highest rank available to a youth in boy scouting. He is level-headed, his level-headed demeanor and inconsistency throughout the years has been a great asset to our community and its youth. And I'm smiling because I think Brian is on vacation, and I don't think he knows about this.
He does.
He does?
He does.
Oh, good. Okay. I didn't know that. So the Citizen of the Year Award. This award would be the highest honor with consistent presence and repeated acts of major impact. Joe Garcia, born and raised in Charlton, is a true gem of our town. Over the past decade, Joe has worked to care for and manage the Charlton Grange Number Ninety-two. Through his efforts, he has maintained the appearance of the building as well as its upkeep. He books all activities in Building Unisys, which many town residents take advantage of voluntarily, of his own time. If not for his sacrifice of time and energy, this historic building would have been abandoned to decay. Joe is also a longtime member of the American Legion, fifteen years, and currently presides over the group as a commander. He gives selflessly and happily. Joe has truly been an outstanding citizen through his generosity. He's made Charlton a better town for all of its residents. He gives selfless, truly a great man. And, uh, yeah. The Posthumous Award, which some of us may aspire to one day.
Everybody, one day.
Take your time.
Given to a departed citizen who has given much to the community. Okay. Kathy Keel. And this was written by her daughter. Our mother's love for this town has had a huge impact on us throughout our lives. In all that knew her, Mom's sad untimely passing on April twentieth of this year has been challenging for us and many to accept. We hope her actions of love and unselfishness, dedication to this town, all may continue to guide us today and forever. Some of Mom's volunteering includes the Old Home Day Parade, Helping Hands Society, Housing Authority, Earth Day, Lions Club. The American Legion recognized her patriotism and how she volunteered her times during observing endless hours at the Senior Center, cooking, taking pictures, and of course, everyone enjoyed her Halloween costumes. Our mother is gravely missed, and she was an icon to this town, capturing a moment in a picture along with our stepfather Quentin. They made Charlton a better place to live. May you continue to work your magic, Mom, with all of us and to this town that you love so well. Thank you for your, thank you Stanley, Kim, Kathy, Mike, and Elaine, to name a few. Kathy was the strongest, smartest, beautiful, caring, and unselfish person we know, and we are so proud and lucky to call her our mom. In memory of our mother, Kathy Keel, we, her children, humbly, lovingly, and proudly accept this citation in her memory. That is it. So that sort of wraps it up.
Yeah, I.
Do we need a motion to?
Well, let me, if I can just, give you a minute here. That is one of the most, this is one of the best jobs of being on the Board of Selectmen year round, ever, is to hear all those stories. And you hear the people that step up, and you hear the kids that step up, and you hear the seniors that step up. It's what makes Charlton what it is. I hope people at home watch this and kids at home and, and.
Yeah.
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 Might have to grab a moment, but I would, I don't know if we need a motion or, or we just.
Just say thank you.
Well, you'll be there in handing out the awards in person, I hope.
Okay. And, and they're, they're all aware and they're?
They've all been told. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And they're all on board?
Yeah.
That's a whole different point.
You'll be there and, well, yeah, and somebody will be there to accept for the Overlook, yes.
It's, 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 it's beautiful. It's the heart of Charlton. It really is. And thank you for pulling all of them together. Really is.
It's, it's our pleasure.
We gotta keep that going. Yeah.
Thank you.
We, we truly appreciate all the support from this board.
Hopefully it motivates others too.
Yeah.
To get involved and help out.
Yeah. Actually, people that volunteer live longer and happier.
Just say, just, just as a general plug for volunteering in all the different organizations and committees we have. Uh, a lot of these committees have older people, which is a good thing. They know a lot. They've done a lot. But at the same time, there's a limit to that, and we'd like to have a lot more. we'd like to have a lot more younger people on these committees so we can teach them what we did, and how we did it, and where we put things, because sometimes we can't always find things around here. But just as a plug for younger people to come on these committees, because we can use them all, and they've got a lot of different ideas. We've got our ideas, but they've got new and, new and different ideas, and they're more than welcome on all these committees, so just as a general.
No, you were preaching to the choir. No, no, I agree.
I should have introduced Jenny Frizzella. Jenny has been on this committee for as long as I have been, I think, almost, and she lives at Overlook, and she's in charge of the brochure, and she's always after us to finish it off. So, and Brad Howard just joined the committee this year, and he's gonna help out with the parade and all kinds of stuff.
He's a rock star, he's like signing up for everything. No, no, I know, which is, but, but going back to the Overlook, because that was a, I'll give 30 seconds here, but since you read 10 minutes about the Overlook, I'm gonna take 30 seconds.
Right.
Someone had asked me, because like a year ago, or a year and a half ago, no, the Overlook doesn't pay any taxes in town. That's not true. I actually asked, there was a time way back when, when they didn't have to pay taxes, but they are the third or fourth largest taxpayer in town. The Overlook gives the town like $800,000 a year.
Yeah.
With the new expansion, but there was a time when it was taken over, and, and people were sort of like, oh, they don't pay taxes, that's not true. So, think about that revenue, what, everything they're doing for the town, plus, yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're a wonder.
Yeah.
They're a wonder for the town.
And they're gonna do a lot more for the songs.
Yeah.
She's got a place all set up.
Oh, that's what it is. I'm running, I'm gonna bake a pancake.
Is it, can you put a double bunk in there in case I need, in a couple of years?
Thank you all once again.
No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Maybe we should remind everybody when it is, what time, what day, just to put it out there. Yeah, the fireworks at Saturday, the 3rd, September 3rd, at 6:30, and actually this year is the first year that we having them in Bay Path.
Going back. We did a while back. Not the first year, but.
But going back to from a sounding con, from Overlook. And then the actual Old Home Days is September 5th, and it starts as early at 7:00 for the racing.
Yep. Yes, 7:00 AM. With, with the.
Soapbox Derby?
With the Soapbox Derby, and then, then we move on to the, yeah, then, then the awards are one or two o'clock or something.
And the parade is 3:30.
Yep. Sorry to hold you up, Mr. Gleason, thank you for joining. You have, you have the, if anybody wants to come up and watch what he has to say, if you can't see it. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, and sorry I wasn't able to join in person tonight, little under the weather, so I wanted to stay, stay home here, but I think probably first and foremost, a big congratulations to that super impressive roster of folks that was just listed off. Last time we were before you, we went behind the fireman, firefighter pinning, this time, a really impressive roster of folks, so that was really neat to hear. But yeah, thank, thank you all for, for having us here tonight. I just kind of jumped in, is any other more formal intro needed from you guys?
No, I, I, I'm fine, I think we all know who you are, I think we're just talking about some, some no parking signs or something, right? Is that?
Yeah, exactly, so, and just for the record, Dan Glisten, here on behalf of Four Score Holdings, DBA Terps, I have Matt Wilks with me tonight, and before we talk about the parking signage, I figure Matt could just give you folks a quick update on all things timing and licensing, a lot of, a lot of good forward progress here, so Matt, if you don't mind, fill everybody in.
Yeah, absolutely, so, good evening, everybody. As you may or may not know, we did receive our final license from the Cannabis Control Commission. So now, we need to bring, we need to order product, bring it in the building, finish up some odds and ends like Uline orders, WB Mason orders for shelving, and some tables in the front, but we're pretty much ready to go, and as soon as we get that order metric tagged, we, we order a, we file a post-final license inspection with the, with the CCC, and they have to come in one more time for a quick inventory check before they get us our commence operations. So, right now, I think we're targeting three, four weeks for, for opening day. But, you know, it could be, it could be a little bit sooner, a little bit later, but, you know, a little bit subject to, to the state on that, but we're in good shape, we're in really good shape.
And, and just, just so that people at home know, this is, this is the, the location on Route 20 West, just before the veterinary hospital, the brick building, that's where they're going in. There's been a lot of work going on there lately, a lot of people. I'm guessing there were probably a lot of people in town that don't know where you guys are going to be, so it's just, so it's Sampson Road, right at the, right at the intersection there.
Yeah, 144 Sturridge is the official address. Thanks, Matt, for the update there. So, we're here tonight to talk to the board about the need for no parking signage, actually on Sampson Road. One of the conditions of the retail use special permit from the planning board was that we meet with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the possibility of installing no parking signage along Sampson Road for a distance of 500 to 700 feet from Route 20, as was recommended by the traffic consultants, who peer-reviewed our, our traffic analysis that was originally presented. Obviously, I know we discussed this briefly at the last meeting, but the cannabis world or the cannabis market in Massachusetts has changed slightly since, since that initial special permit hearing and traffic analysis, and what I mean by that is, we're not quite seeing the same sort of opening day demand that we used to see at some of these cannabis stores across Massachusetts, where you would get, you know, a line of folks coming in the door when, when the store opened. You know, right now, there are upwards of 300 retail facilities in operation in Massachusetts, obviously, as you folks know, another in Charlton. Yeah, over 300, and so, you know, we, we don't think necessarily we'll be getting that kind of traffic, where people will be encouraged to try and find parking across the street on Sampson Road. We also have, you know, a good number of parking spaces on site, so, you know, I'm sure Matt could speak more fluently to the operations side, but the team feels confident that they can handle the demand with the amount of parking that they have, and the size of the store they built, and the amount of throughput that they can generate at that facility.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think with existing parking configuration, along with, you know, as Dan said, like, the, the competition that's out there, what I'd recommend to the board is that we, in a sense, defer the decision, so, in my opinion, we don't need them, but we reserve the right, if something really strange happens, that we could always talk to, you know, and say, you know what, we were wrong, and people are being crazy and actually trying to cross Route 20, so my motion would be that we don't require signs now, but we reserve the right to come back in, in the future and ask that they get installed.
I, I, I would, I would tend to agree with that. How many, how many parking spaces do you have that might be for your other guy there, but?
Matt, is it 48?
Yeah.
You should know this, sorry.
Yeah, I wanna say 43.
There's 43 parks.
I don't understand, it's definitely in the 40s.
Yeah.
And with the 4,000 feet square, square feet of building, I just, I feel like it's plenty of space, and we'd certainly be open to putting signage in if necessary. We're open to whatever you want to do, but.
No, I, I, I tend to agree with Bill on this. I mean, I mean, two and a half years ago, we were watching what happened in Leicester, there were like the first one that opened, and they were, they were busing people from an open lot, and then people were peeing on, urinating on other people's lawns and the whole, yeah, I, I don't think that's gonna happen on Route 20 now, it's, it's a mature industry, and, but, excuse me, but, but to hear the 300 retail operations were already open, there's only 351 towns in the state, that's, that's a pretty saturated market, you guys, good luck to you guys, I hope you guys, yeah, you got some competition.
Absolutely.
It's a great location.
Yep, no, it is a really good location.
Still need a second on Bill's motion.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool, we're good. Hey, Matt and Dan, don't forget to invite us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, we'll keep you guys posted as we get closer.
Thanks, and congrats once again on the, on the CCC.
Oh, thank you very much, appreciate it, we're excited.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too. Moving right along. We are now up to.
It's a recommendation of award for Little Nugget Dam repairs. All right, so we had a sealed bid for the Little Nugget Dam repairs that was received on July 6th at 2:00, at which times the bids are open and read aloud. Tatum and Howard reviewed the bids and are of the opinion that All Construction Services, Inc., is the lowest responsible and eligible bidder, and recommends the Board of Selectmen award them the bid in an equal amount to $120,000. Funding for this project, for this project was approved at the November Special Town Meeting in the amount of $250,000. I concur and recommend the Board award the bid as recommended.
And before anyone asks, that does not mean we can spend the extra $130 on whatever we want, it would be, it would be up to, so, we are only spending $120,000 in that money, like, the, the other money never gets borrowed. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve the bid to All Construction Services.
I would accept second.
I accept, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nope.
Hear none, say none, all right.
Just as a clarification, there is also the engineering costs that are part of that $250, but we're still well under the budget, so. All right, the next is a, for a special one-day alcoholic beverage license for Ballard Welding, attaches an application by.
Wedding?
Wet, yeah, wedding, sorry, I can really talk today. So quiet for the first half, that's, sorry, for the Ballard Wedding, attaches an application submitted by Bethany Ballard for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used on October 15th, 2022, from 3:30 PM to 10:00 PM at Camp Jocelyn, 150 Richardson's Corner. The application was forwarded to the police chief, building commissioner, and fire chief, which, which all have approved. Per the Board's policy, if the, if the special alcoholic beverage license is approved, the dates on the license should include the date before the event to allow the alcohol to be delivered, and the day after the event for the event to, for any alcohol to be removed. The motion recommended is valid.
So moved, and congratulations.
Do I have a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, no. Congratulations.
I want, I have a question. The Camp Jocelyn, that's a town, that's our property, that's a town?
No, 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 no.
It's a private, private camp.
It's, it's the, the diabetes camp for boys.
In other words, whatever would happen, we know, like.
Right, we are, no, I believe that.
It's our town property.
Yeah, but they, yeah, but they, but even in our packet, there's, they've got the liability.
Yeah, but, yeah, but that was my question, because we got named.
No, no, good question, all good questions.
Next one is a discussion on Employee Appreciation Day. So, last year, the Board of Selectmen had voted to hold their Employee Appreciation Day on the 3rd Tuesday of each August. Last year, the Employee Appreciation Day included lawn games, food, music, all coordinated by you guys, thank you very much. During our meeting with the Worcester Red Sox representative, it was suggested that this year's Employee Appreciation Day, Appreciation Day may be included with the planned events of Charlton Day being hosted on September 1st, of course, all employees.
December 21st.
21st. Again, I don't know what's wrong with me today.
No, no, it's the first with the other one, no.
I think, I think so. So, yeah, of course, all employees would pay their, pay for their ticket costs, but with a portion of those ticket proceeds going toward the Charlton Race Foundation, again, we're still coordinating those efforts, but wanted to get the opinion of the Board if you wanted to proceed with a Employee Appreciation Day as you did last year, or defer to the Charlton Day at the Red Sox.
I think if we could do something special for the employees, at the day, I'm sorry, on the day at the Red Sox Stadium, I, I'm not sure what that would be.
Okay.
At the Red Sox?
At the Red Sox, yeah. That would, that would be nice, so maybe we can work with them and try to come up with something special.
No, no, they, they actually, we talked about that, and they actually, they said they could, it's, it's random ticket seating when you buy them online, for the $5 to go to ReAs, but employees could all sit together potentially in one spot, and they get, and their ticket would be loaded with.
It was a, it was a few-dollar comp.
The few-dollar comp to go buy a hat.
Yeah, we could always make some, or at least I can make a donation to it, so.
No, yeah, we will, but is this gonna be bought like a, a segment of tickets at once? Can, for example, you go and they give you money however.
That's kind of.
Employees would sit together, anybody else that buys them can sit wherever they want, but, yeah.
That's kind of what we look to do, the trails still kind of coordinate it with the, with the Woo Sox as far as, because we, we were originally talking around it, the 21st just being the Employee Appreciation Day, and then we kind of expanded it, because we're kind of talking whether or not to defer Charlton Day to next year, have more planning, but we're like, no, we can, we gotta pull everything together this year, so we're gonna.
This is great.
Yeah, if you can make it work. Logistically, I think that's, I think that's the right way to go.
What are the hours on this?
It's a, it's a baseball game, 6:45, it's nine innings, so it's.
Perfect.
Yep.
And we'll work actively on figuring out if we can get enough people to schedule a bus from Charlton, or, or something like that.
That's a whole different.
Yeah, that's.
That's close enough.
Yeah, that, that would be, you know, and, and we threw a few options out, and, and the Woo Sox thought ReAs was a good solution this year.
No.
Next year, next year it'll be bigger, it could be another, but ReAs with the cost of heating oil this winter, it just, it just, it made for a whole lot of people, and, yeah.
Yeah, I think anytime that we can encourage our employees and really promote and, and thank them for it, so yes, I, I think combining the, the two, because without the employees, Charlton doesn't do well, that, that's what it comes down to, so I think combining those two days, or those two events, if you will, at the Woo Sox game is the right way to go.
And do we have a, like a promotion flyer or something that we?
That's what I'm still waiting on from them, because they're gonna develop that ticket link, so, once I, once they kind of get that together, I know that they were working to make sure that Ray's was fully on board before getting everything set up, so I'll follow up to see where that's at, because sooner I can get that, the more time we have to push it out.
And I know since I'm on that board, the Ray's Foundation, they have a link right on the website, on a town website, and you can purchase the t-shirts, Charlton Strong t-shirts, and if somebody would like to wear the same shirts, and that part of that money goes to that foundation as well.
That, you know, that, that could be up to them at that point, if they want to do a bundle, like a $25 ticket with a bus ride, and a t-shirt, and, and whatever.
I'm talking about a link on the website for that foundation directly, so whoever is going, we might, we might let them know that if you have any interest of buying the Charlton t-shirt, Charlton Strong, you can, they can purchase, the people can purchase this on, online on the Ray's Foundation website, and, and part of that money also goes to support the board, the.
That's, that's, I love it.
So I know that, at least in talking to some of the Ray's Foundation members today, was that the, they were going to be brought out on the field for recognition, they were gonna have a booth set up during the game to be able to give out information about the, about the foundation and the concourse, and they were also gonna have time during their radio broadcast to give information, so, there should be some complete coverage about them.
And, and, and it looks like Steve Robinson's going to sing "God Bless America" at the seventh inning stretch.
That would conclude it. No, that's great, that's awesome.
Sounds good, we'll, we'll run with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, first year out, yeah, no, it's, it's so, it's beautiful, I think it's a great idea, but, being competitive nature as Charltonians we are, we have to beat 453, that's Auburn, that's the leading one, so 454 is.
We will.
I'll drive, I'll drive back and forth, I'll bring people, doesn't really matter, but anyway, all right, moving along.
All right, the next one's for setting the special town meeting date. So we've scheduled the special town meeting for Monday, October 24th, 2022, I'd ask the Board to approve the date and open the warrant. We have confirmation that the date is available at Charlton Middle School, as well as Town Clerk, Town Council, Finance Committee, and I believe that we're still just waiting for confirmation of the moderator. Also attaches the calendar for the town, or for the Fall Town Meeting.
Can I make a motion to approve the date and open the warrant?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? None opposed?
Right, so I believe that we want to hold on.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold new business number five until our next meeting.
Yes, I agree.
All right, so the first thing under old business will be consideration of proposed amendments for sealer awaits and measures. So at your July twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting, the board was asked to consider proposed amendments to the sealer awaits and measures fee to be comparable to other towns. At that time, Selectmen Seager had questions regarding the fees and how much of those fees go to the town. All fee, all fees collected are deposited with the treasure collector's office. And just as a correction from my prior statement at that meeting, the town collects and retains a hundred percent of the fee collected. And then the the full budget for the for the sealer waits and measures is but is within the town's operational budget. Of note, the current fee schedule does not support the costs of service that are provided by the by the sealer awaits and measures. So attached shall find a breakdown of the sealer's expenses, locations of equipment, fees charged, and fees that are still owed, a copy of the twenty twenty-two sealer awaits and measures town report showing what this portion is, what this position is responsible for, what the request is for the increase in fees, and what the current fees are and other towns' fees. Mr. Valinsky is also requesting that the board, for the board to implement language to be added to the fee schedule, implementing late penalties for unpaid invoices for work performed. Late fees proposed are, the late fees that are proposed are as follows. After thirty days past due, a fifty dollar fee. After sixty days past due, a hundred dollar fee. And after ninety days past due, the seal and scanner will be discontinued and and the following fees will apply. A fee to not seal a device for nonpayment of service, fifty dollars per device. And a fee to reseal a device that is not sealed for nonpayment of services, three hundred and fifty dollars. So Ron Valinsky, our sealer waits and measures, is here tonight to give you any clarification about what is proposed.
So Mr. Chairman, through you. So Andrew, at a very high level, again, just to kind of summarize, we haven't really updated this for fourteen, fifteen years.
Yeah, correct.
To the.
Not longer.
The money that we're bringing in is not actually covering Mr. Valinsky's expenses through that, even though it comes from the from the general fund. So what this would do is basically put the onus upon the people who are actually using these. So in a sense, this becomes a user fee. Or 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 an increase in user fee, so that the general population who, you know, aren't really impacted by this, rather, it's the business owner, which I think most people would want to discourage. But we also recognize there's a there's a cost of doing business in town. That being said, unless people have questions for Mr. Valinsky, which I appreciate your coming, by the way, it's always nice, because we always see that signature everywhere. We're like, what the hell's wrong? But I would make a motion, both motions at once, to A, increase the fees, and B, to also institute the late fee policy, which I'm surprised we didn't have one.
Yeah, I I second that motion absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, saying none.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your homework on that, yeah.
Yeah, honestly, this was really good.
There are some things that we need a little catch up on, and that was absolutely one of them. I read through the earlier today, I read through the whole.
Appreciate it.
It actually makes sense.
And thanks for everything you do. I know it's kind of one of those strange jobs that nobody really thinks about until they go, hey, wait a minute, how does that work? And then you need someone who's a professional to actually go in and make sure that, because you're really there to protect customers at the end of the day. So, you know, by the way, for those who can't see me, Mr. Valinsky is in the audience. So it's one of those things that, again, he's he's a true customer advocate to make sure that everyone is being treated fairly. Cool. Thanks, John. Thanks, Mr. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Next up.
Eddie reports.
Board of Selectmen Committee reports.
I can do a quick, it's not on here, about Fay Mountain. So we've had a couple of meetings. We've been meeting actually quite often to kind of catch up for a couple of missed meetings. This really, the the big, the big announcement is they're opening their kitchen, their bakery at the end of August. I think the date was the twenty-fourth. I know I put it in, I I did like a summary for Andrew on that, which they'll have baked goods, pies and cider donuts, and they have a cider press. So it's kind of be kind of a cool new thing that they're they're doing. There's lots of capital improvements. You know, we own the property. I know that we're in process of putting in the windows. The windows are just bad and they're, the wood around them are all rotten, so working on that. And then there's other, definitely items that need to be repaired. And I kind of shot an email over to Kurt, and Andrew's been working on it. So it's it's, we're just working on maintaining our asset there. I'm sure there'll be more discussions about some of those costs and what to do. But it's a kind of a new committee for me, so I just wanted to give everybody a decent update.
Thanks, Pat. And please let Neil know, I'm a big fan of his Facebook page, Fay Mountain Farm. It's always like to see his family and the dog and everything, so it's always.
Yeah. And if anybody doesn't know what Fay Mountain Farm is, look it up. It's it is a true gem in the town of Charlton. There's no question about that. Like, we have, we have many, but that's a good. All right.
All right, so the next thing is my goals and objectives for this year. So last year, your goals for me were included infrastructure planning, solicitation of businesses, implementation of an e-permitting system, try to improve transparency, review of certain town fees, and to streamline the permitting process. So deferring to you guys what you guys want me to get done this year.
Mr. Chairman, what I'd probably recommend is that we all take a look at these and either remove or augment them, keeping it at a manageable number of anywhere from four to five. We all kind of rank order them and and whatever becomes top four or five. But we actually finalize them at our meeting in September, so that Andrew knows what he's gonna be judged against next year.
Yeah.
Does that work, Bill?
All right. Works.
I I actually think this this meeting tonight pretty much covered a lot of your goals that we wanted you to do anyway.
Planned specifically for that, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like I planned it that way.
I get it, I get it. Yeah, yeah, I get it.
It's nice to see such progress in these areas, because significant progress in a lot of these areas.
Especially the the e-permitting and just the streamlining of the permits. That's huge.
Well received.
Town Administrator's report, I believe, is.
I'll try to fire through this real quick, so.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, so right, so right now, the the state budget and number of bills are sitting before the governor. There are some specific earmarks dedicated specifically to the town of Charlton. Really just want to thank our legislative delegation, Senator Fatman, Representative Frost, Representative Durant. I know I gave him kudos last time for it, but there were a few other things that were picked out in some of these bills that made it to the governor's lap. And we'll see if they stick when he when he strikes the pen. But it also included twenty-five thousand dollars for the police station roof replacement, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for fire station improvements, a million dollars for sewer plant improvements, and a million dollars for road safety improvements in the town of Charlton. So thank you to them for their advocacy on that. We've beaten Charlton Day at the Worcester Red Sox all over the place, but again, September twenty-first, see y'all there. The, at the Prindle Lake Recreation Area, we did have a tree come down and took out a fence. I was working with Jerry and the and the tree warden, Seth Lemansky, on getting that tree removed. There's still another portion that's in the lake. We've been kind of working with conservation as to whether or not to leave that one or take it out. I know Prindle Lake wants to see it removed. We'll we'll see what we can do about that. But we also decided, rather than rebuilding the chain link fence that was there, it was a little, it was very old, wasn't really doing much, we've just removed it. Right now, we don't have a plan of replacing that. So if you guys have any public comment or anything that comes out that wonder what happened to the fence, right now, there isn't a plan to remove unless we discuss later. Just to update the board, I do have kind of a professional development plan for FY twenty-three. The big thing is I'm gonna attend a twelve week virtual high performance leadership academy through the International City Managers Association, which will be starting next month.
It's virtual?
Virtual.
There's no boondoggle there for you.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't even get to go anywhere.
Twelve weeks.
Self-paced, self-paced, so we'll see where it goes. It goes till, goes till Christmas.
Oh, self-paced.
Yeah. And just to update the board, the police station water line is finally completed. They're on town water now. Right now, we don't plan on fully decommissioning the well on site in case there's any issues that do come up where we need to utilize it, but we are gonna drain tanks out that are inside the the station, so that way the water doesn't get go bad. But really, just wanted to thank Chief Kurt Meskis, Jerry Foskett, Peter Boria, and McClure Engineering, all of them, you know, dedicated a lot of time and effort to making sure this got done, so.
That's great.
I extend my thanks.
Awesome job, awesome job, awesome job to them. And you, Andrew. So then.
I just told him yes.
That that pretty much, I believe that pretty much wraps us up.
Unless anyone has any other business, but I don't.
No. Anybody else? No.
I have a question about the the round table. When is that gonna be?
Oh.
Oh, that's on the, that's page two.
It is the top of page two. So the all boards and committees meeting?
Yeah.
September twentieth, night before, so.